Sure, Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, in person and online. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. All city offices will be closed on May 31st in observance of Memorial Day. And we have four proclamations to get going. We will get started right with the National Police Week first. I think I have that one. Proclamation, National Police Week, May 9th through the 15th, 2021. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of Raton play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Raton. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of Raton unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim May 9th through 15th, 2021 as National Police Week. And call upon all citizens, all patriotic civic and educational organizations of Raton, to extend a sincere and heartfelt thank you to all law enforcement officers, past and present, and by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Witness whereof I have heretofore set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2021. Grab us a picture here. Alright, thank you guys for your service and what you do for us. Alrighty, proclamation number two, Public Works Week.
National Public Works Week, May 16th through May 27th, 2021. Whereas public service, work services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' everyday life and whereas the support of the understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works services and programs such as water, sewer, street, highway, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas health and safety and comfort of our community greatly depends on these faculties and services and whereas quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of a qualified and dedicated personnel staff, public works department is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of this work. Now therefore it be resolved that James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, be hereby proclaim May 16th through 22nd, 2021 as National Public Works Week. And the City of Raton invite citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health and safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, James Neil Sagata does set his hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2021. Signed, James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor.
Don't be shy. We have a proclamation for National EMS Week. Mr. Chavez.
Proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week, May 16th through May 22nd, 2021. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care for those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage with thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers. Therefore be resolved that James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, is hereby proclaim May 16th through the 22nd as National Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Raton and invite citizens and civic organizations to extend heartfelt thank you and recognize the contributions which Raton Emergency Medical Services make every day to your health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. I witness therefore have heretofore set my hand to the seal of the, cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 11th day of May, 2021. James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor.
He's squeezing the middle of you guys. And he does mean squeeze. Thank you guys. Alright, and one more, Better Speech and Hearing Month, Protem.
Alright, I want you to first know that I invited Mr. Danny Cummings to receive this as he represents the school's speech-language pathology program, basically, right? Do we have any others? Aside from your teletherapy team, are there other therapists in town? Right. And of course I represent the medical aspect of speech-language pathology and our audiologist has retired. Proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month, May 2021. Whereas many of us take communication for granted, illness or injury makes hearing, speaking, thinking, or swallowing a challenge for many Americans. And whereas by impairing communication, speech, language, and hearing disorders can limit academic achievement, social adjustment, and career advancement. And whereas audiologists and speech-language pathologists are professionals who specialize in the identification and treatment of communication disorders and conditions that affect millions of Americans. And whereas each year during the month of May, audiologists and speech-language pathologists throughout the nation make a special effort to inform, educate, and raise public awareness of hearing, speech, language, swallowing, and cognitive disorders. And whereas more than 42 million people in the United States, one in 10 families have hearing, speech, language, cognitive, or swallowing impairments. And whereas most people with communication disorders can be helped through medical and surgical treatment, hearing aids, or hearing and speech rehabilitation. Whereas the healthcare costs of therapy, devices, and medical care plus the indirect costs of income lost for people with communication disorders are estimated at more than $30 billion per year. And whereas with early diagnosis and proper treatment, most people, including children, with communication disorders can lead full and productive lives. Therefore be it resolved that the City of Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim May, 2021 as Better Speech and Hearing Month. In witness whereof the seal of the City of Raton is affixed this 11th day of May, 2021. Signed by me, Mayor Protem.
Could you introduce that young man to us? Could you introduce that young man to us?
This was one of my first students. Mr. Danny Cummings.
Thank you. Alright, item five says committee reports from commissioners, but I believe we did that last meeting, right? So we won't bypass that one in this meeting, alright? Item six, items from citizens present. At this time we'll take anyone from the audience that would like to address the commission. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item seven, deliberate and apt on approval of minutes, regular meeting held on April 27th, 2021. Should we all have a chance to go through them?
I found nothing in the minutes. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion as second to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, presentation fiscal year 20 approved audit reports for Car Rigs and Ingram LLC via Zoom. Mr. Barrett.
Mayor Commission, the annual audit report is, as we talk about frequently throughout the year, is a lengthy and in-depth process. And it basically takes a whole year to complete that process. Now later on, we'll talk about starting again in the following year. But tonight, we do have a gentleman on the phone from Car Rigs and Ingram. That's our independent auditing firm. And they are here to present their findings of the audit report, the financial report. It has gone through the process with the state engineer office. It's ready for presentation to the commission and to the public. And I believe that Mr. Sperlin is on the phone and also on Zoom. And he will be available to answer any questions that you have as well. So if we could, I'd like to call on Mr. Sperlin.
Alrighty.
Okay, everyone here be okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then are y'all receiving the Zoom feed or am I just through a phone?
Zoom feed.
Okay, perfect. Let me get my screen shared here. We can get started. First of all, just to thank you to the City Commission and RBS Board for hosting me today and for taking a few minutes to talk about the fiscal year 2020 audit. You know, which we started way back in May of last year. So it's been a continuing long process. But you know, today we'll just go over kind of the highlights and how things went. And you know, on the agenda, audit timeline, we'll go over the auditor's report, which is really the high level of what y'all care about the most, which is did you get a good opinion of your financial statement? We'll go through a couple of financial statement highlights and a couple of other reporting matters. And you'll hopefully be in and out here pretty quick. I don't want to take up too much of y'all's time. The first thing, the timeline, as I mentioned, we started getting into, going into the contracting process back in May of 2020. And we went through all of these different phases. Kind of the main ones were the fieldwork back in September and October. Just submitted to the state auditor's office, you know, by December 15th, the statutory deadline. And then the most recent development, April 13th of 2021, is when the state auditor's office formally issued and released the audit for, to the public. Now the city, there are three reports that, you know, that my firm issued as part of the audit. The first one there that you see on this left-hand slide is the independent auditor's report. And this is the report that talks about, you know, your financial statements, whether they're fairly presented or not, which, you know, we're happy to report that the city and RBS both are receiving an unmodified opinion, which is best opinion available, doesn't get any cleaner than that. There weren't any areas that we couldn't render an opinion on. Then if you move to the top right there, you know, you all are also subject to governmental auditing standards, which requires an additional report. We call it the yellow book report. But it discusses internal control and, you know, if anything does come to our attention related to internal control policies and procedures or state statutes, that's where we report those under the governmental auditing standards. And in that you have one NMSA finding and one for the city and for RBS both. You know, on the spectrum of findings, there's some different criteria that help us gauge, you know, how severe these are. The most severe idea of what's called a material weakness. And so, you know, that's something that is clearly needing the attention of the City Commission or the Board, whoever the governing body is. All the way down to what we call an NMSA finding. And so the State of New Mexico only, they require us to report every little thing that we find. And so that's the two NMSA findings that we have here. So the important thing is, both of those findings are the lowest severity that you can have. We really report them just because we have to. If we wanted the State of New Mexico, it probably would just be a comment that we would make to management and it wouldn't even be brought to the report board. And additionally, the city is required to have a single audit. And so there's a third report that's in the back of the financial statement that discusses that federal program, goes to an audit of a federal program. And in this case, the city received funding related to the water, wastewater disposal system for rural communities. And a separate opinions rendered on that. And we're also happy to say that, you know, that opinion was unmodified and we noted no findings in relation to the federal program. So overall, you know, I'd say this is a very clean bill of health and very encouraging to see, nothing significant to report to you at all. And then additionally, we'll go through just a couple of quick financial highlights. We like to give you kind of a little bit of trend analysis so you can see the big picture of what's going on with the, with RBS and with the city. And so this is the state of net position for Raton Public Service Company. And what you're seeing here is that top line is total assets. And then your two biggest asset categories, which are cash and capital assets, are also listed out here. They're relatively stable over time, which is a good thing to see. And probably the biggest highlight is back in 2019, 2018 timeframe, there was a transformer that blew, which is why these capital assets right in this area declined a little bit. Additionally, this is liabilities for Raton Public Service Company. And also very consistent, you can see that is getting paid off over time. That's the blue line. And then moving on, your fund or your net position for Raton Public Services is essentially what is equity for Raton Public Service. And what you can see is the majority of the net position there is restricted in some way, that's the top line. The unrestricted portion is at the bottom there. So the majority of the equity is spoken for in some way. It's kind of the main takeaway. And then the statement of activities, basically the income statement for Raton Public Service. As is kind of the goal with the utility operation like this. You see that the revenue and the expenses are staying very consistent and also very similar to each other. The idea is that an entity like this is going to make just enough money to cover their costs, which is exactly what you're seeing in that trend. Next, we'll move to the statement of net position for the city. It's basically the city's balance sheet. Taking a look here at the assets for the city, you can see that once again, capital assets, cash investments are the largest assets that the city has, very consistent over time. And over the past few years with some work that has been done within the city, different capital projects, you can see that new infrastructure assets have been getting put in place over the past couple of years. That's the increase you're seeing in 2019 and 2020 there. Moving over to the liability side, what you're going to see is that the city's liabilities track closely with net pension liability, which most of you will remember went on the books a few years ago. It's basically the representation of the city's portion that are eventually going to be obligated to in the state pension plan. And then you can see there also, something notable is that some new debt was taken out during fiscal year 20 for the filter plant project. So that's the uptick in debt, which is blue lines that you're seeing there from '19 to '20. And then once again, very similar to what we saw in RBS, the majority of the city's net position or their equity is tied up in some restricted form, which is pretty common for most governmental entities. What you're seeing in this slide, the top slide is still the net position, the top line is still the net position, bottom line is the unrestricted portion. Moving on to the city's income statement, you know, we'll see that things are relatively stable over time, slight trend upwards, mostly due to, you know, slight tax rate increase and facility increases over time. And that your expenses are also relatively stable. They didn't drop off just slightly there in 2020, mostly due to, you know, reduced costs during the pandemic and things of that nature. And then finally, here we have the city's general fund, which is a smaller portion of the totals we were just looking at. It's the main operating funds, which can be useful to work at to see, you know, kind of the immediate health of the city's financials. And then you'll see here, once again, revenue expenditures are very steady over time. Revenues, which is green line, are up slightly in FY '20 due to some state grants that were received and then a little bit of additional deflection that took place. And then finally, total cash in the general fund. Total cash in the general fund is important because that's what's available to cover your immediate operating costs typically. You can see that there's been a little bit of tension of cash over time, which is probably a good thing, you know, a good thing to have a safety up there. And so now, you know, so this slide is here to summarize, I think a lot of it, so that's the audit over the wastewater program that we were talking or the pollution earlier. And really the main takeaway here is no findings noted. That's the bottom bullet point. Additionally, directed material compliance requirement, that's kind of in the middle of the slide here. That's there to give you kind of a taste for what we're required to test for whenever we're looking at these federal programs. As a federal program, it's going to be pretty stringent with what allowable costs that there are, how you procure things. And then of course, in this particular program, there's oversight from, you know, a grant body that financial reports are sent to on a periodic basis. So, you know, those are the most significant of the compliance requirements that we will have this year. Moving on, just a quick reminder to, you know, we try to say this stuff as much as possible just because, not only is it a weird thing, most of the time people are not auditive exactly what we're doing. So, you know, what our responsibility, our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with applicable framework, which in this case is US GAAP. And then additionally, we're obtaining reasonable assurance. And then what that means is that we have a risk criteria to be applied to make sure that we're looking at the more risky areas that potentially could result in this statement, the financial statement. By no means do we look into every single transaction. Additionally, we use materiality, which is essentially the threshold that helps us determine what the more significant dollar value are and things of that nature. Additionally, we consider internal controls as part of planning our audit. However, we do not render an opinion on the internal controls. We report what we find, but we do not, you know, render anything as to whether they are, you know, appropriate and operating effectively or anything of that nature. And then finally, you know, kind of what we're doing today, another big part of completing the audit is communicating significant matters to the governing body. So again, you know, that's kind of what we're doing today. And then, you know, what management's responsibilities are. So management includes both, you know, those people who are working day-to-day in the city as well as the governing bodies, that would be, you know, RBS Board or the City Commission. And what you're responsible for doing is maintaining internal control activities and for monitoring them. Additionally, your view should be selecting applicable accounting policies and, you know, things that make sense operationally and from a financial reporting standpoint. And then ultimately, you know, as your auditor, we perform an additional service to help you prepare your financial statements. However, you know, the city ultimately activate ownership of those by designating someone with appropriate knowledge to oversee what we've done and make sure that things are supported appropriately. You know, in this case, that's going to be Michael Land, Eva, and then used to be Sandy down at RBS, now is D-Problem. And then, you know, in addition to designing internal controls in order to help with financial reporting, you should also be doing that to help ensure that you're compliant with applicable state and federal statutes and to prevent and affect fraud. So that's what's looked at as a capable component. And then finally, you know, as we mentioned earlier, we're required to report to the governing body anything specific. And, you know, part of management's responsibility for the governing board to be attending and participating in those items. So for instance, you know, Mayor Sagata and Board Chairman Period will both at the exit conference and the entrance conference. And where they're listening, they hear all this information multiple times throughout the audit and are notified any significant items early and often in the morning. Next, you know, the two findings that I had mentioned earlier in this presentation, they're summarized here, once they're made in check, findings in the city. Again, this is a very minimal, small item. We probably wouldn't just verbally communicate it except that in State of New Mexico, we're required to communicate it to the governing body. And then, you know, there was one through RBS related to the certified procurement officer. So very, same level as well. The other thing that I'd like to highlight here is that the city resolves three of its four prior year findings. And then RBS resolved both of their prior year findings. And so that's really what we like to see as auditors, that I think it identifies audit from year to year. The city and RBS both are taking action to resolve those in a timely manner. So that's really the best thing that you can ask for. Additionally, you know, we'd like more information. The findings are further detailed in the city's financial statement on page 119 through 121. Okay, so I'm going to run through these relatively quickly. But, you know, the highlight here is so the governmental accounting standard for GADP is responsible for setting the standards in the city and RBS write their financial statement under. So they're kind of making the rule, the blood goes in that document. And they've been working fast in periods for the last four or five years, it seems like issuing lots of new it seems like issuing lots of new guidance and changes. Um, but, you know, luckily back in, uh, May of last year, they recognized that, um, you know, some of those changes may need to be held off, given some limitations we were all working with through the pandemic. So GADP save in ninety-five here delayed the implementation of a couple of those standards. So that's really the most important thing. Among those, GADP eighty-four got delayed to be applicable to the 2021 fiscal year. Uh, this relates to the fiduciary activities, which the city has a few agency funds falling into that category. So, you know, there should be minimal impact in FY twenty-one on, on the city, uh, RPS have need from back to news. Uh, and then GADP eighty-seven relates to how levers are reported, that one can be, uh, relating to the 2022 fiscal year. Um, so that, that'll be changing when these results are just slightly. Um, additionally, GADP save in eighty-nine, this deal a lot with, uh, interest costs and, you know, how they're being treated during a construction period. In this particular case, there should be very little impact because, uh, a lot of global governments are already following essentially what this, uh, what this standard clarifies. Um, GADP save in ninety-two, um, this one is really kind of, uh, a catch-all and a find to these types of times, make things more comparable across the governmental industry and how things are reported. And then finally, GADP save in ninety-six, uh, is going to relate to subscription-based IT services. So, you know, he subscribed to using some type of online accounting software opposed to something local. That, that would be the example, but this is totally going to, to clarify. And then GADP save in ninety-seven, uh, this relates to reporting, uh, pension plans, OPAH plans in some situations where it may be confusing as to whether a component unit should be reporting those amounts or not. So in this particular instance, uh, you know, this is not something that's going to impact the RPS, city of Raton relationship very much. So, so we wanted to throw it in here so that you at least had the reference there. Uh, the majority of these are also listed in the financial statements, uh, if, if you are looking for additional detail. Um, finally, just a few value-added suggestions. Um, you know, we've gotten to where we talk about, uh, IT services all the time and becoming more and more relevant, uh, as the years go on and now that we're doing a lot more things continually, uh, but, you know, we, we do have a board IT group that you, that you have access to if you need it, you're automatically asked about that. But if nothing else, um, I would always recommend city and RPS board be considering every few years, doing some type of IT work up to make sure that your, your security is good, um, around your IT system. It seems like every year there is another, uh, local government that's falling subject to some type of cybercrime. In fact, I was actually just messaging back and forth with, uh, with Beijing Department who, who oversees this project earlier and, uh, we were getting reports from another client of ours that actually kind of just happened back in May, that they were letting us know about, uh, something similar. So very relevant and happens, uh, all, all the local governments are being targeted, of course. Um, you know, if you ever need assistance with GADP implementation, so eighty-four to eighty-seven coming up, we're available to help with that if, uh, you know, if you have the need for that. And then, uh, of course, you know, we always encourage that the city staff and management continually, uh, receive training because as I mentioned, especially with respect to GADP items, uh, they're moving back in periods and there's lots of changes being made over time. Um, so it's very important every year to be keeping up with those, those changes. Additionally, uh, you know, we'll demand them to put on the free training from time to time on those topics. I'm trying to pull those off to the city as they become a process. But other than that, you know, I just wanted to take one more opportunity to thank, um, you know, everyone at the city, um, for the past four or five years that I've been working city and RPS, really appreciated all their open assistance and audit is not possible without y'all's help and we definitely appreciated that. And, um, I'm also, uh, just wanted to say that we really value those relationships and hope to continue to build on it in future years. So, you know, the access packet, um, I don't think I got sent in the first, I sent to Michael Ann, but, uh, here's our contact information. You can reach out to AJRI if you ever need anything at all or if there's further questions. But other than that, if there, if there are questions you want to ask right now, feel free to, to fire them up.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Berlin. Appreciate the presentation. Is there any comments that the commissioners would like to make at this time?
This is a lot of hard work and I'm glad they did it.
Absolutely. Mr. Berry or Mike Laney, anything?
Oh, well, Mayor, I'd like to, we'll address this in the next item, but, uh, the professionalism of Car Rigs Ingram has been much appreciated over the, the years. We are able to renew with them one more year. We'll, we'll talk about that, but, uh, acknowledge that, uh, with our, uh, arrangement with the, the electric utility, that's a little unusual and Car Rigs Ingram has the expertise to, uh, you know, really understand that. Uh, we will, the day will come when we'll try to explain that to a, a, a new independent auditor. Um, however, um, that's, it, it works great for us. It's a little unusual out there in, in New Mexico, but, uh, Car Rigs Ingram has, has, uh, uh, put a professional staff on the Raton, uh, audit every year. And then we have a great staff here at the city, uh, with, uh, as he said, Michael Ann, Geneva, Sandy, and now Robin. Um, and, you know, I think we've had a, a pretty good result, but we really have some, some talented and dedicated people here, uh, representing you on, on that end. And so I want to acknowledge their efforts.
Absolutely. Kathy, you, Robin, or Dave have any comments or questions for Mr. Spurla?
No, actually, uh, we appreciate, uh, CRI, you know, working with us and us having the opportunity to, you know, touch base with him with the transition with Robin. It, it's great that we can contact them and ask questions and help move through the issues that arise. And I'm sure all the offices do that. So again, we appreciate them being available to help with situations that may come up that are unusual and for the fine work and, and the partnership that we have with them. So, thank you, Mr. Bowers and all of your team.
It's always a pleasure working with you.
All righty. Well, if there's no other further questions, we appreciate your work. We, uh, again, want to extend our thanks to all of our hardworking individuals in our departments and your hardworking individuals. We, we've enjoyed the, uh, partnership and continue to look forward to one more year at least.
And we will pass that on to everyone and, and we appreciate a lot. So, uh, y'all have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Goodbye.
All righty, thank you, Karen. This time deliberate and act on resolution 2021 dash thirty-two, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty audits.
I shall move to approve the resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, acceptance and approval of the FY twenty audits.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, the acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty audits. Desiree, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Mayor Segoda.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
All right, resolution passes, thank you. Thank all of you guys for your hard work. We appreciate that, we, we truly do. I mean, when I first came onto this, uh, in two thousand and eleven, wasn't much fun going through an audit report. So what you guys have done in the last eight years or ten years, gee, last ten years, incredible and we appreciate your work.
Yes, we do.
All righty, item D, deliberate and act on fiscal year twenty-one, audit services recommendation and authorization to contract with selected firm. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commissioner, as we've talked about, uh, frequently here, there is a lot of oversight of, uh, the municipality from various, uh, state entities. And one of those is the state auditor sets rules that govern the process that we've, uh, talked about here tonight. And of course, this makes sense. They have ultimate approval over the independent auditor that is retained, uh, by local, any local government entity. And, uh, periodically, there is a requirement that you would, uh, engage a new firm because you kind of, you know, fall into, to habits with the same old firm. So, um, to keep that independent part, uh, viable there, we would change from time to time. However, we were fortunate in 2020 during the year of COVID, that we were able to retain Car Rigs and Ingram, because as I stated, they're familiar with, uh, with Raton's structure. Um, and it would have been very difficult to get the audit report done and all of the work that you saw on the screen there in a timely manner. So we were happy about that. However, uh, there was an allowance, uh, uh, by the auditor's office that will allow us to retain Car Rigs and Ingram for one more year. Um, I think that's, that has been a good relationship as we have said, and, uh, we would recommend that to the city. Typically, this is, uh, administered from Michael Ann's office. Also, Robin and Kathy and David are here, uh, regarding RPS. So I don't know if y'all have some, uh, uh, comments on this item and then, uh, recommendations to the commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, so I did put a memo in your packet. And so as City Manager Berry said, we are recommending to you that we utilize Car Rigs and Ingram for one more year. The state audit rule was revised, allowing a firm to be utilized for eight years. So last year, we had requested a waiver because of the COVID and, uh, you know, we're still kind of in the middle of this public health emergency. So I'm still not real sure for this engagement for the FY twenty-one audit, I would imagine that we would still do a lot of remote, uh, transmission of documents through email and uploading into a portal. So they have a nice portal that makes it real convenient for us to upload our documents and share them. So that makes it very nice. So, you know, based on that and the fact that we're allowed to use them for one more year, we are recommending that we utilize them. Uh, the price would still hold the same as before, which is just slightly under sixty thousand, not requiring an RFP. Now, our lodgers tax, uh, audit, it's called an agreed upon procedures, that's a separate contract now. It used to be part of, um, the overall engagement, but we enter into that contract separately now. So that one is considered non-audit service and we would do a separate engagement for that. So, uh, with your approval this evening, uh, we do have to submit our recommendation and enter into the contract by May fifteenth. So, uh, kind of a short window here. And then, um, we would anticipate starting some preliminary test work late June. July isn't a real good time since we're trying to close out the fiscal year, but we could probably accomplish some things late June, early August to get some of that preliminary test work done and then ultimately, uh, reach that December fifteenth deadline.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Michael Ann? All right, thank you.
Motion approved FY twenty-one audit services recommendation and authorization to contract with selected firm.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead with the recommendation and authorize a contract with Car Rigs and Ingram for fiscal year twenty-one. Is there any further conversation? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, folks. Uh-uh, you guys can leave. We gotta stay, you gotta stay. Item E, public hearing deliberate and act on ordinance number ten thirteen, approving and adopting a local economic development project participation agreement between the city of Raton and Ramo Family Farms LLC to plan, design and construct commercial greenhouse structures and lease payments and tenant improvements to the city's Armex facility for a local economic development project. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commissioner, uh, we did talk about, uh, this item a couple of meetings back. You did have, uh, the partners present, they made a presentation to the commission. Um, I would point out that Travis is with us tonight. Thank you for attending, uh, Travis. And then Jessica Barfield is, is here, both have put in a lot of work on the project. And, um, I, I am really excited about this project. It's, uh, uh, I, I think, uh, going to be great for the group here, but also, uh, great for the community. And, uh, it's, it's something that we've intended back to the time that we started talking about, uh, economic development. I, I think the exact particulars of the project is, is not what we would have identified. And so you just never know where the opportunities are coming from. But I'm very excited about the project and anxious to see the project proceed. Now, I would point out to the commission that, um, there are a, a number of elements to the project and, um, what's different than the typical LEEDA type of project is we have, uh, an appropriation from the New Mexico legislature, uh, involved in that. That's, uh, not typical. The usual process would be LEEDA funds would support something like this. However, the, uh, this was the funding from the governor that was, uh, directed to Raton for an economic development project. Uh, you'll recall that the city of Raton issued a request for proposals, um, and the pro, one proposal was received from, uh, Ramel Family Farms. And I think it's a, it's a great proposal. Uh, a lot of effort has gone into prepared, preparation of that proposal, uh, the project and then, uh, everything to get us to this point, uh, in the process as well. And so looking forward to this, I, uh, I'm very optimistic it's going to be a successful project. And as the group had stated to the commission the last time we talked, um, one metric that we typically use, uh, to measure success of this is the number of jobs created. However, maybe a, a larger, more important, uh, metric would be, uh, we're really looking at developing a, a, uh, entrepreneurship as we had talked about in our, in our economic development planning. Uh, we're really looking at an incubator for that. And, uh, we look at a number of, of, of projects that could leverage from, uh, what we talked about the, the start of this project. So over time, over the years, uh, we're looking at a cooperative effort with a number of parties that have been involved, a, a number of entrepreneurs, and, and the jobs go along with that. And so with that, Mayor, uh, I can tell you that I, uh, really have not received any, uh, public comments prior to the hearing here, other than talking to a bunch of attorneys about the documents. And so I don't have anything else to report on, on, uh, that, uh, point. Jessica and Travis might want to, uh, address the commission during the, uh, public hearing here. And so, uh, I would hold up there and allow somebody else to speak.
All right.
And I'm going to make mine short and sweet and hand it over to Travis for a second, but I did want to talk a little bit about this project because I've gotten a lot of questions from the community on like what we're doing with crickets. And I think there's a big, um, you know, not miss, they just don't understand that there's so many different components to this project because we brought a lot of people to the table. And so I just kind of wanted to reiterate that this greenhouse operation is going to help us provide fresh vegetables throughout to the area here. And I think, you know, Travis can confirm the date, but the Santa Fe Trail Traders building has been purchased. That will be, you know, the future home of our grocery store here. Um, they're currently working on Von's Dry Good in Trinidad, which will be Trinidad's version of the grocery store coming out of our commercial, um, greenhouse. So, you know, there really is a big community impact that's going to come from this. And I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that, um, there's a lot of different things going on and a lot of different ways we can benefit. But I don't know that we would have found very many, um, outside operations that would come in and start at eighteen to twenty-two dollars an hour and provide fresh fruit, vegetables, you know, for, for this area. So I'm excited about it. Um, we got some changes at the last minute. I'll let Travis talk to you about that. We didn't really have a chance to see that. So we have some changes forthcoming. But Travis, why don't you come and give them an update from your point of view? If you don't mind.
How did it get on for the brief track up there? All right, so forgive me, everyone. You got the lab geek today, so everyone's going to miss Kayvon's dulcet tones. However, yeah, I just saw the changes to the PPA today. And I've spoken with Kayvon, and we wanted to make sure that we assured everyone that we are more than happy to make those changes to the PPA. And we want to get that to you, and I think we're putting to Wednesday.
Right, right.
Great?
Yes.
So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
What changes are these?
Commissioner, I think that through the day and looking at some, there are a couple of terms in the project participation agreement that had to do with insurance and then responsibility for improvements that we want a little additional time to work on and wordsmith a little bit. And so in some discussion during the day, our recommendation to you regarding the ordinance or the lease agreement or the project participation agreement is that we continue to work on those. We bring them back. I will talk to you about a special meeting next week related to the budget. But I think we can complete that process and come back next week and bring it back to you for your approval at that time.
I think in the process of moving this forward quickly so that we can work on getting that DFA approval and different things that we've had so many emails going back and forth. Whenever we called and talked to Kayvon prior to this, he was like, let's figure this out. You know, this isn't exactly what I was expecting either. So we'll come back on Wednesday and hopefully have those two different things figured out. Basically, you know, as they move forward, they intend to ensure their business, their contents, and we will ensure the property and land as long as that remains the city's. So we'll make that change and get it back in front of you. And yeah, a lot of lawyers don't know New Mexico LEED law. No surprise. We'll get there. So we'll make those changes and try and have those for you before Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? We're looking forward to it.
I'm looking forward to it. Anyone has any questions about crickets, I'm ready.
Are you going to get us a sample of the?
I'll bring anything you want.
Cricket cookies?
We'll get my aunt. She makes some really great cricket cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Travis, thank you.
So then, Mr. Barry, what I'm hearing is maybe items E, F, and G we may postpone?
The ordinance has not been revised, but the ordinance really incorporates the project participation agreement and the premises lease agreement. We would ask for postponement on consideration of all three. I would bring up now that when we get down the agenda and we talk about the draft budget, we would suggest to the Commission that we would schedule a special meeting for next week. I think the conversation has been Wednesday at 6:00. And in regard to the ordinance and the two agreements, we propose to bring those back to the Commission then next Wednesday.
I'll make a motion to postpone items E, F, and G. Ordinance number 1013, Exhibit A and Exhibit B, regarding the Ramel Farms agreement until our special meeting next Wednesday.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone items E, F, and G. The ordinance number 1013 and Exhibits A and B until Wednesday's meeting, proposed meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. I guess we'll see you Wednesday. All right. Item H, Deliberate an Act on Bid Award for CDBG Downtown Rattone Infrastructure Project Contingent Upon Concurrence From Funding Agency. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commission, we have proceeded with requesting bids for the Community Development Block project. As we stated last time, this is for the Downtown Rattone Infrastructure Project. I like calling it the drip, and so I'll keep calling it that. And generally, we're looking at reconstruction of a portion of Third Street from Parsons to Cook Avenue, and then work on portions of Cook Avenue, Park, Clark, and Savage Avenue. And so it's a fairly substantial project for us, funded with an agreement with New Mexico DFA for Community Development Block grant funding. And in your packet, you see a tabulation of the bids that were received. The way the bid was structured is there was a base bid laid out, and then there were two deductive alternates. And you put a deductive alternate in the bid request when you're, you may be deducting some of those due to the cost or other factors. In this case, since we worked on this, put together a preliminary design and a preliminary budget, and presented the project to the Community Development Board, a couple of things have happened. And primarily, the cost of commodities has risen significantly since that time in 2018 or 2019. So there is a concern about building the project, building the full scope of the project and staying on budget. And so we did with both of these bids, well, let me talk about the bids a little, and I'll come back to the budget. We did receive bids from HO Construction and Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling. Both of those contractors have performed work for the City of Rattone in past years. Both done a good job for us. Low bid was submitted by Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling. You see, the base bid is $753,498. That's a lot of dollars, Commissioners, and I get a little tongue-tied when we get that many digits in there. And then you see that with the deductive alternates added in, you're over $800,000. And so that's the low bid that was submitted. That is over our established budget. Generally, we have a grant agreement for $750,000 with Department of Finance Administration, Local Government Division for CDBG funds. We agreed to a 10% match at $75,000. When you add all of the expenses in, because there are professional services, number of professional services involved in this as well, that leaves us short. I believe the amount is about $92,000 and change. Now, I'm going to recommend to the Commission, and I believe that Karen, our engineer on this, is present, has drafted the recommendation to the Commission. We have concurrence. Our recommendation is to award a contract to Rocky Road for the base bid amount. That means we would take the deductive alternates out of the project. By doing that, we would substantially complete the project that we originally designed. We would be responsible for the extra costs in excess of $90,000. We have those funds in the gas tax fund. That would be the source of funding for our original $75,000 plus the additional cost. And so that's the recommendation. I'll turn to Karen. And if I left anything out, Karen, cover me.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, I did want to add that we have been coordinating with CDBG regarding the bids that we've received and pulled together all the information that they requested. And they basically said that they have all the information that they need, and they're going to be reviewing this. I think they said potentially this week, over the next week, as far as making a modification to the agreement with the City of Rattone as far as the budgeted amount. But aside from that, I think we have a good project here. Construction costs have been increasing every year. And this year, even though it's a COVID, still a COVID year, we still seem to struggle with contractors being too busy, which is really surprising, but that's overall a good thing. So I'm happy to see that this is a contractor that's within our region that submitted the low bid, and they're excited to work on the project as well.
All righty. I see that the alternatives were going to be a drive pad and a concrete valley gutter. Where were those going to be?
So we had a number of places for the drive pads, but predominantly in the downtown area in the streets that Scott had mentioned. So we're looking at Cook Avenue on the north side, as well as Park Avenue on the north side, and then I believe Clark and Savage as well.
They went out?
Generally, they would be at Alley.
The alleys.
Where the street intersection with alleys. We had some work in front of the courthouse that would be impacted by that. And then in the area of the old Chaminot Brothers Ford building, there was some of that work scheduled there.
I guess my question would be that with some of the drainage issues we've had with rain and all that, without these valley gutters, are we going to see a significant increase in the problems, or are we going to be all right?
The valley gutters are in pretty bad condition. I mean, it would be nice if the monies were there to be able to build them. But as far as everything else on the project, when you look at the goals of CDBG, it really was the lowest priority item.
I think, Mayor and Commissioners, we've got a lot of infrastructure work going on now. We're going to talk about additional infrastructure. I think we want to come back subsequently and perform that under a different contract. But when you deal with CDBG, first of all, you have an obligation to build the project you said you were going to build.
Right.
And we're doing that. And then do it on the budget that you stated. And we explained to them that, and they understand, that commodity prices have really made things unpredictable. Schedule on contractors, it's hard to predict. And normally, we have, you know, concern about, on a project where there's a lot of hot mix in it, you know, getting three bids. And in this case, we got two bids. However, you know, you worry about who might bid those. So I think the plan would be to come back subsequently and do that, maybe under an annual street contract. And it works that it's located at the alleys because we can build this, come back seamlessly incorporated. It's not like when you dig the street up to fix the water line. It won't be that kind of situation. It'll just happen in a subsequent phase. But we want to continue work in the downtown areas. We'll probably look for a little bit of recovery of the gas tax fund, and so we'll keep that on the list. But then that accomplishes those goals that we talked about. And when you see the funding, the concurrence from the funding agency here and the award contingent upon, we will wait for an amendment to the grant agreement from Local Government Division. They said that there was no problem with that, but it would take them maybe a week or so, as Karen had referenced. So we will not send out a notice of award until we get that. Now, we can take the action tonight to award contingent upon getting that concurrence, which we have discussed with them, and we would anticipate getting that shortly. When we get that, we'll notify the contractor of the award.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could talk about the schedule on this project a little bit. We would anticipate going into construction on the project this summer, and we would anticipate completing construction by the end of the calendar year. So it's a lot of work. That's a relatively quick schedule, and we'll move it along fairly quickly. Of course, as we said with the water line, this is going to cause some disruptions to traffic flow in the downtown area, the places where everybody wants to go every day, specifically the post office. So I'll warn people in advance that, you know, this will be a little messy until we get it constructed.
All righty. Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to award the bid award for the CDBG Downtown Rattone Infrastructure Project contingent upon concurrence from the funding agency to Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling.
We have a motion and a second to award the contract to Rocky Mountain Road contingent upon concurrence from the funding agency. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Karen.
Item I, Public Hearing and Review of the Fiscal Year 22 Draft Interim Budget. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commission, I think that we are set to go forward with the public hearing in regard to the upcoming budget. However, we do not have a draft to present to the Commission tonight or for the public to look over. As stated earlier, I would request from the Commission that we schedule a special meeting to come back and evaluate the draft budget, and we'll do that in the form of a workshop. Schedule that for next Wednesday. I think the date is, somebody correct me here, but the 19th?
I think that sounds right.
And y'all can talk about the day or time, but I did hear a 6:00 PM number mentioned in the conversation somewhere. So I don't know if you want to address that first or to move on with the discussion.
How's that date work with everybody? Fine with me? It'll work?
It'll work as long as it's not one minute earlier than 6:00 PM. I will be sliding in from Las Vegas.
Okay.
Maybe here at 6:01, so I apologize.
Well, we'll try and hold for you. All right, I think that works.
I usually don't make it till almost 7:00.
Good. Well, I mean, if it's going to be an inconvenience.
No, I can make it work.
Okay, all right. Sounds good then. Let's shoot for Wednesday.
We'll do some juggling or tap dancing.
Yeah, Desiree can sing or something.
Yeah.
So in regard to the draft budget, I would make some general comments. And then Michael Ann has been working on getting this budget together, as has all of our department heads and our staff. And so a lot of work has gone into this so far. And what I addressed to the Commission are generally the big picture items of the projected revenues and the projected expenses. And so at this time last year, we talked about the threat to the revenues and the difficulty in projecting revenues with a lot of unknowns. We were looking at an extended time of restrictions on local businesses, and we thought that we might lose some businesses over COVID restrictions. I think right now, with some perspective of where we're at right now, we're in turquoise currently. The administration of New Mexico has talked about the potential of getting out of any restrictions and being restriction-free. We know that COVID is still occurring out there, and public health and safety is still the top issue of all of us and the administration. However, it looks like if we move along, and the difference right now is the availability of vaccinations. And so I'll use the platform here to really encourage everyone who can get the vaccination is eligible to get the vaccination. It's readily available, and it does all kinds of good. So I think that probably most of you have received the vaccination, you know, no problems. And so I'd encourage everyone to do that. But the Governor has said that when the state has reached a level of us being 60% vaccinated, that really restrictions will be lifted. And so I think we're close to that. I think that's very doable, and I hope that it happens, number one, for protection of the public, but also, number two, it's important that we support business, especially this summer, when a lot of them have their big season. And so operating without restrictions would really help businesses recover from the shutdown. And not only our business, but a lot of you have been involved in the shutdown. And not only our business, but a lot of you have been involved in this conversation. We've talked to Philmont. We've talked to the Whittington Center. They've been impacted as well. And, you know, we've been concerned about the future of really impactful organizations like that. And so we're looking forward to getting back to there. But again, with perspective, our grocery receipts tax has not fallen off the table as we feared. We've seen some modest dips in GRT collections. However, staff has done a great job as far as controlling expenses. They've worked with myself and the city clerk on an ongoing basis through the year. And so the budget from the last year is not in bad shape. We look at some stabilization of revenues. And when we talk about the revenue side, GRT is the biggest issue that we look at. And, you know, we've got some optimism about that. Other things that we're looking at, we're starting up a significant amount of construction in the area. And as we had talked about before, that has an impact on GRT. Even projects that are let by the city of Rattan, there's a grocery receipts tax element to that. So some of that will loop back to us. And with all of the construction going on, I think that's going to be a positive impact, starting in July 1. And then we'll actually see a distribution in September. We'll see the impact of the online sales and grocery receipts tax that's applied to that. We've got a modest stipend from the state over the last year for online sales. However, we should realize our full share after that. And there's not a way to really project what that's going to be, as I've said. Or if there is, I'm really not aware of what that is. Other than seeing a lot of delivery trucks in town, yeah, look at the crystal ball. We're not sure, but I think that could be a pretty positive element for Rattan. And so we'll find out later. And it's hard to put that into a budget projection, so we'll be conservative about that. But I think that could be helpful to us. There are some other funding programs that we'll look at on the revenue side, such as the American Rescue Plan. There's a little information out on that today. And we want to do something positive in Rattan with any of those opportunities. There are actually numerous opportunities out there for pursuing some of the projects, getting some of the funding that we planned for. And we'll aggressively pursue those things. And so a lot of those really are not fully formed yet. The guidance is not out on those. We'll talk about those through the rest of this year, you know, into this budget. But we'll be aggressively pursuing any of those opportunities that we have. But what we do know about on the revenue side, I've got a little bit of optimism about. I don't think it's going to really take off or spike. We're just hoping for stabilization of that. And the fact that it hasn't been as bad as we expected so far, that's pretty positive. Now, on the expense side, you know, the city of Rattan is pretty accustomed to running lean. And, you know, we've talked about, hopefully, one of these days, we can actually expand services. We are looking at maybe a little better improvement for employees. I'd like to model something on the order of a 2% raise across the board for employees. That's not been something we've been able to do over the last couple of years. However, employees have seen increases in things like their insurance, their part of health insurance, and some PERA as well. And so we'd like to look at that so no one loses ground. We'd like to, you know, employees to do a little better, as a matter of fact. So we'll model that in there. That's something that we'll be looking at. We do have the four negotiated collective bargaining agreements. Still some work going on on those, but we'll make a projection, and that will be in the personnel schedule as well. And I think other than that, as far as our numbers of personnel, we would like to keep pretty stable. Generally, we run with, you know, kind of the minimum staff in most departments. I'm glad to see a lot of our employees get the recognition here tonight because we've got some very dedicated people that just provide those services to the public. But we will look at, you know, keeping everybody employed and try to make the best deal we can with employees. So I'll hold up there. Michael Ann might have some comments for us in a little more detail. Mine's kind of the broad brush comments. Michael Ann drills down on the details. Been working with a department head on preparation of this. I know that the water utility and the electric utility have been working on their part of the budget as well. So we hope to pull this together shortly, present it to the commission.
All right. Michael Ann?
Thank you. City Manager Berry, you did a pretty good job there. I crossed off a lot of things that I was going to talk about. So thank you for covering those items. As we've talked in the past, this interim budget is due by June 1. So our goal would be to have the special meeting, to have a fairly complete draft to review, and then hopefully just make some minor changes from there, and then present to you on May 25, a final interim budget to submit for the June 1 deadline. As the city manager stated, you know, we are optimistic that the grocery receipts taxes, that those revenues will stabilize somewhat in FY '22. Some of the projects that we'll talk about, that I'm going to be incorporating into this budget, some of them may start maybe in June, but the majority of them will occur in FY '22. So we do have an airport project. That's a pavement rehab project that you recently approved. The agreements on that, that's $304,000. We have a depot project. That one's out to bid right now, a little over $202,000. And then, of course, the economic development, still building, is $700,000. We have the Whittier Byron project. That's another $300,000. Asphalt crushing project, that's just under $60,000. Senior center kitchen renovation, we'll be moving forward with that. That's $163,350. We're looking at probably Phase 2 of aquatic center repairs. So that could come in maybe about $50,000. We're discussing with the library the possibility of a new boiler. So we're looking at $50,000 to $75,000, possibly there. Convention center probably will have some Phase 2 that we'll be working on, another $50,000 to $75,000. We'll have to make some decisions on the airport hangar, so we'll discuss that. You'll recall that was a $250,000 match that we were going to commit from the general fund. And then, of course, we talked about the CDBG project this evening. That's just going to be shy of a million. So with all of those projects combined, that's about $3,362,000. So, you know, we'll take all of that. We like to put that together to show DFA that we have projects to support our estimates, to back our revenue estimates. So that's how we utilize that information. Another thing we need to factor into this budget is a minimum wage increase. January 1 of 2022 will be $1150. So we'll be taking that into consideration, which could affect the part-time seasonal entry level and temp positions. And then also probably fire department personnel. We have not received word of any health insurance increases, which is good. And I believe also that the New Mexico Self Insurance Fund will be extending a discount to us again.
Sounds like it.
Again, this year. So that certainly will help. But other than that, those are just kind of some of the things that we're looking at. With some of the other grants, we're still waiting to hear, like on our EMS fund, what our award will be for that. The law enforcement protection fund, we will be receiving about $1,200 less this year, and that's just due to turnover in the department. And at the time, we had to submit the application. We were down several officers. So this will be the last year on that NMFA loan for police vehicles. So that will be paid off during this coming fiscal year. And then I think also, working with the fire department and our fire chief, you know, we'll try to determine what our carryover will be at the end of this fiscal year. Now, that loan was actually paid off during this fiscal year. So they no longer have the transfer to the debt service. So they'll receive that full allocation for the state fire fund. So just some things that we'll be discussing next week at the special meeting, but all of that will be incorporated into our draft.
Okay. Any questions for Michael Ann?
Once again, I think that you guys need to praise what we can give you because of the job you guys have done. I really do. It's been great.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
We appreciate you greatly, and all the work you do.
But the key is, you know, we want to include our department heads in these discussions. They know how best to run their departments. And so we value their insight and opinion on, you know, what it is that they need in their department to operate. And so we can't probably fund everything, but we'll certainly try to prioritize those needs as best as possible.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All righty, thank you. Item J, deliberate and act on dispatch agreement between the city of Rattan and Towne Springer. Mr. Berry? That's all right. Not a problem. Okay. Deliberate and act on dispatch agreement between the city of Rattan and Towne Springer. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, item J has a new dispatch agreement with Towne Springer. Item K has a similar dispatch agreement between the city of Rattan and the village of Simroon. As we've talked about here before, the city of Rattan operates a regional dispatch center here in City Hall, 24-hour-a-day service for really other entities throughout our region of the state. And we, this would be renewal of existing agreements, and really no change in those agreements from previous terms. There is a payment from those entities to the city of Rattan, and it's based on a calculation of their call volume. Those municipalities generally have a way to get reimbursed for that expense through the state emergency services, and so they're made whole there. But that's how that number is calculated. But we are not proposing any change to that number. That's been static for several years. And this really would be a renewal of the existing agreements. Now, I'll go through, really, the primary detail would be the fee that's paid. So the Springer Agreement states that the Towne Springer is to pay the city of Rattan a sum of $32,004 per year for the services provided by the Rattan Communication Center. So that's the primary term there. And I'll answer any questions you have on this agreement or the next agreement.
I think if it pleases the commission, we just combined J and K. I believe the amount in Simroon is $14,000.
I will move to approve dispatch agreements between the city of Rattan, the Towne Springer, and the city of Rattan and the village of Simroon.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the agreements between the city of Rattan and Towne Springer and the city of Rattan and the village of Simroon for dispatch services. Is there any further discussion?
And yes, Mayor. As stated in the Simroon agreement, it is $14,000 a year.
Okay. Cool. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item L, deliberate and act on agreement for fiscal year '22 between the city of Rattan and state of New Mexico, CYFD Juvenile Justice Grant Number 21-690-3200-20841, Amendment 2. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is our standard agreement with children, youth, and families for our juvenile justice program. You'll recall that earlier this year, we were awarded some supplemental funding for this year, but that does not apply to the remaining three fiscal years. Unless, of course, there are additional funds, we would apply again. But starting out the fiscal year, we would be approving this agreement for the $118,650. And this is for the girls' circle, boys' council, and restorative justice programs for FY '22.
All righty. Any questions for Michael Ann?
Nope.
One quick question. Can you remind me what the, how we do manage for that, because it has the 40%? Is that an in-kind?
Yes. So it is in-kind. We have our two subcontracted providers, the HRDA and the Peace Through Education, that do provide some of that match. And then we also have match. They have different formulas that we can use. I know Daniel Archuleta, our coordinator, does a good job of pulling that together every month. A lot of the programs do, like community give-back hours. They volunteer doing various things. And so there's a certain dollar amount that we get to count towards that in-kind. And so she kind of, even when they have their board meetings, the board members, we get some in-kind towards that. So, but yeah, we are required to source a 40% match. And as of yet, it's been a non-cash match.
Thank you. I think it's a great program.
Yep.
And I just want to thank Daniel Archuleta because really, you know, we couldn't do these programs without her as our coordinator. So she works really hard and has for many years. And to our, you know, subcontractors, they do a great job, too.
Sure. And the motion?
I will move to approve agreement FY '22 between the city of Rattan and state of New Mexico, Juvenile Justice Grant 21-690-3200-20841, Amendment 2.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agreement for fiscal year '22 between the city of Rattan and CYFD Juvenile Justice. Is there any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item M, deliberate and act on CYFD Juvenile Justice Grant FY '21 Budget Adjustment. Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, the deadline to submit a budget adjustment for this program is May 15. So our coordinator is proposing, and this is in working with the restorative justice subcontractor, just to do kind of a line item adjustment between what they call their pre-circles and their post-circles. And this would allow to fully expend all of the funds for this fiscal year by June 30. So we are requesting the line item adjustment of $1,485.
All righty. Any questions or comments for Michael Ann?
I'll make a motion to approve the Juvenile Justice Grant fiscal year '21 Budget Adjustment.
A motion and a second to approve the CYFD Juvenile Justice Grant Budget Adjustment for fiscal year '21. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Michael Ann, you're just well-skiing up there.
I know, I should have brought all my papers.
Item N, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-33, Budget Adjustment Number 13, Fiscal Year '21. Michael Ann?
So the last budget adjustment that we did requires a special form for the grants. So that's why we did it separately. But I am bringing to you this evening several line item adjustments that you will see in our general fund, one of them being, we had discussed previously, that when we purchased the police cars, we received a legislative capital outlay grant. Initially, we had budgeted a temporary transfer, where we would transfer the funds from the general fund to this line item to cover payment to... general fund to this line item to cover payment to the vendors, because sometimes the turnaround on those grant reimbursements can take a while. But however, we did receive the monies timely, and so that adjustment is no longer needed. So, I'm going to go ahead and request to reverse that. But you'll also see that we have included in the revised adjustment that I gave you this evening, we are including the purchase of two additional police vehicles, and so we're proposing to utilize some of our salary savings as a result of some vacant positions that we had in this fiscal year. There is still a state price agreement with Phil Long Ford, and I've attached that quote for these two vehicles. This does not include the outfitting, which we would try to incorporate into the next fiscal year budget. But as you've probably heard on the national news, there is kind of a shortage of new and used vehicles, so this is kind of a rare opportunity to probably purchase these vehicles now. I believe they do have the police package, and the city manager could correct me on that. But as far as the outfitting, I would need to get some additional quotes from the chief to include that in the next fiscal year budget. But we could, I believe the vehicles are here in town, so we could purchase them in this fiscal year, and then after July 1, move forward. And we would probably have to send them to Albuquerque for the outfitting.
Sure.
But we would work on obtaining quotes for that. So, that is in there for your consideration. And then, also, at the last meeting, you did approve a Better City contract, and so I've included that adjustment. And then, also, for the CDBG project, for the additional funds required for that project that was approved this evening as well. So, is there any questions on our request?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 21-33, Budget Adjustment Number 13.
A second?
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 20-21-33. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item O, city manager report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. I'll report to the commission that proposals for the electric purchase power agreement have been received, and evaluation by staff and the city's council has commenced on those. We'll talk about award of those proposals here at a later time, and take some review and diligence to sort through those. But four proposals were received. This is, comes after the buyout of the Twin Eagle Power PPA that we had talked about earlier in the year, so that's ongoing. I'll also report a little news that relates to Rattone Water Works. We are diverting water on an ongoing basis from the Lake Malloya Source, as Commissioner Chavez had reported. Even though we're in a prolonged drought, we've had a pretty good winter and early summer in the watershed there, and so, in looking before the meeting, Malloya's seven or eight inches below spillway right now, but we're actively pulling water to town, meeting our reserve. We've had a pretty significant inflow into the lake, so we're in great shape on Malloya. Work is going on on the Simroon River Divergent System, so that system is currently offline. The work that's gone on recently consists of the repair of a control valve at the diversion facility. Also, there's been the beginning of pump reconditioning and motor replacement on our pump station. So, one pump has been sent out, reconditioned, brought back and installed, and the motor replaced. We will continue that process with all of the pumps. Those pumps and motors are about 40 years old. There are other items to the modernization of the, of the Simroon system. However, doing these pumps one at a time has, has worked well so far, and we'll continue that process. Work has recommenced since we took the winter shutdown on First Street at the Great Blocks Project. We're anticipating that work would be concluded by July 1st. Michael Ann had talked about other public works projects that we're bidding, or we're anticipating the start of construction, so I will go through those again. I'll report to the commission that with the mayor pro tem, Schuster, her and I attended the county commission meeting yesterday, and we had a discussion with the county commission as far as proposal for land acquisition to enlarge the area of Sugar Reed Canyon State Park. And so, what I had discussed with the county commission, and I also want to bring action to the city commission, there is a request or opportunity for a congressional request for appropriation funding, and they are asking for our submission. We would put something together for you and submit that to the federal delegation. I would recommend, and right now, this, this congressional appropriation is pretty wide open. It can be whatever you think is a priority. My recommendation to the commission right now is to consider this purchase of a tract named the Bartlet Mesa Ranch. It's a tract of property on top of Bartlet Mesa, generally adjoining the Sugar Reed Canyon parcel owned by the City of Rattone, consists of about over 2,200 acres. It's been used for cattle grazing, ranchland. It's very similar in nature to the James and John State Wildlife Area in Colorado. I don't know if you've been to the James and John, but it hasn't been grazed by livestock for an extended period of time, decades, I think, and it's, there's a lot of wildlife up there. It's a great wildlife area, and this Bartlet Mesa piece is very similar to that. Now, also, I report to the commission that the mayor and I had a conversation with the governor's chief of staff, really a productive conversation about outdoor recreation plans in the area. I think the chief was very receptive to our plans. We plan to get him more information to try to enlist the support of the governor and the governor's staff, and specifically for this project. So, I'll be working on that as, as well. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I don't know if you have any comments from our various conversations there. I would also point out that Commissioner Chatterley has been very active with the Outdoor Recreation Task Force in developing this project and trails projects, and I'm pretty optimistic about where all of this is going. The congressional appropriation, it's a method of funding a local project that has not been used by Congress for many years. And whether the money is, actually materializes, I think it's a little early to say, but they are requesting proposals. They've said mid-May, so that's about all the information I have. We will work on this. We actually have a phone call set up with Senator Luhon and his staff tomorrow, so a lot of things happening quickly on this. And so, I'll have to come back to the commission with something in the form of resolution. However, we can have a discussion now, I think, about, you know, where you want to proceed on things. We really can't come to any kind of a vote or conclusion, but just to let you know that that's developing quickly, that's what has transpired, and kind of the direction that we're going in. Let me hold up there and see if any commissioners have comments or, you know, on the various elements that are brought up.
Madam Pro Tem, any comments?
I just want to say that the county commission meeting went very well, and Mr. Berry did an excellent job presenting the ideas, and Commissioner Fernandez volunteered to join the task force.
Correct.
Yeah. And they were, I think they took the, his presentation very well, appreciated it.
And I would just comment, in our conversation with the governor and her chief, he immediately saw the project at Sugar Reed as not just a tourist project, but as an economic development project, and he caught on to that very quickly, and you could just see him starting to work the numbers. So, I think it's very encouraging, our conversation was there.
I'd like to comment, too, if I may. That Bartlet Mesa piece, it offers a couple really important elements to overall plans connecting us with Trinidad, because that is, has a key connection for trails between us and Sugar Reed Canyon State Park. So, that's one area. In fact, when they found out that, you know, that we were serious about trying to connect some way, they, they spent that time planning on their end, you know, to do that. The other key component it has is water, especially on top that could be potential wonderful, great water source for the soda fountain area, which we know hasn't had water since the fire. So, yeah, there's some really wonderful ideas with, with that piece and that extension.
I would just add to that, that we have had a conversation with the director of New Mexico State Parks, and they, we have talked about this for about two years now. Krista Foye is the current director, she is actually retiring at the end of this month, and the deputy director is Toby Velazquez, he was on the phone call as well, or the video conference, and I think that Mr. Velazquez would be the new director, very supportive of the project. Lastly, sometime before that, we had a conversation with the Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy, the Outdoor Recreation Task Force, and Commissioner Chatterley had had a recent conversation with them, and I think they would be an active participant in the, the project as well, the acquisition, as they did with the Fisher Peak State Park. And so, we'll, that's another contact that we'll follow up with and try to pull all of that together, and do that in a relatively short amount of time. The, the property is listed at $2.7 million. I think that with some development needs, we may be looking in the order of $3 to $4 million. I did ask the county commission to also dedicate any requests they would have for an earmark towards this project as well, and as the mayor pro tem had stated, I think we got a very positive reception from the county commission. I will conclude with an item here. It was reported to me that Josh and Emily Woods from the Family Worship Center had organized a trash cleanup at Roundhouse Park this last weekend. They got about 30 people out there that participated in the trash cleanup, did a great job. One of their members, a gentleman that I really appreciated was John Woodier, and I just learned of the passing of Mr. Woodier recently, but he was a gentleman that put a lot of effort into, into community service for Rattone, and I just wanted, while we're talking about the Family Worship Center, just, just note his contributions to the community of Rattone. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. This time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion.
A second?
Motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor? I think we have to do a roll call.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Roll call vote, please, Desiree.
Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
We are in closed session. We have about a five-minute recess.